Um, we will, uh, have, we have, uh, all board members present, including, uh, Terry Johnson, who's in, called in, so she's on by phone. So with that, we'll rise and we'll say the pledge of allegiance. All right, our next item is, uh, comments in the audience, but I don't think we have any, uh, requests for that, so we can move on then from, uh, from that agenda item. And then we'll go on to approval of the agenda. Uh, does any board member have a request to pull anything from the, uh, from the agenda? Hearing none, then we will, or the consent agenda, rather. Hearing none, then I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as proposed. Sure, okay. Meanwhile, we'll, uh, take this opportunity to, uh, have Dr. Schultz introduce two new employees who, uh, began on July 1. And with that, Dr. Schultz, uh, be my guest.
Uh, well, it's hard to believe you've put up with me for a year already, but we have two new administrators that started on July 1st that are here with us tonight to be introduced. And the first is our, um, new business administrator, Stacy Van Beek. She has, um, been here off and on just trying to acclimate herself. And so I know you've seen her and, um, we are so thankful that she, um, joined our team. She, she has students in the district and has lived in our district and, um, has spent the last six, almost six years in Flandrew as their business administrator. And so she came highly recommended from, um, Mr. Weber, and I was very glad to steal her from him. So, um, the second individual we have, and I don't know if you would, can we have him come up here?
Sure, yeah.
I think people need to see our new, um, facility and grounds director. His, uh, his name is Keith Bodnas. Um, and you know, when I came to this district, I always said, man, if we could get, um, a super, a former superintendent who maybe was ready to do something different in life, um, that's what we need in this position. And when you know it, uh, when we, when we advertised, Keith, um, did reach out. He spent over 20 years as an administrator, um, many of those as a superintendent, um, in, in Castlewood. And so he has done the things that, um, you know, a facility director and grounds director needs, needs to know when to do. And already it's been really great having him on. So we are just so thankful for both of you for being here and wanted to introduce you to those listening, so.
Yeah, welcome, welcome. Matt, for the board, welcome, Keith and Stacy.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I had a, I had an hour this afternoon with, uh, Keith. We went and looked at some facilities and so, uh, had an opportunity to kind of chat about this and that, so good.
Thanks, Kelly.
Uh, I don't know, uh, we, uh, we got the motion to, uh, approve the agenda as proposed. And we were going to vote electronically, or? Well, we'll just take a voice vote for now. Can you live with that, uh? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, we will, um, an agenda. And then I will read the vision statement, uh, empowering all learners to embrace and be inspired to realize their potential. Uh, Dr. Schultz has not, um, indicated to me that we have any, any, um, item from the board members and administration to identify any items on the agenda that would, could be considered a conflict of interest. Hearing none, we do not need to consider such conflicts and we can move on to the agenda. And so we'll move on to all business before we, uh, we organize our all business is approval of bills.
I move to approve the bills, um, for, um, up to this point in July 2024.
I second.
Okay, we're motion a second to approve the bills.
I have to voice vote for two more, two more minutes until Amanda gets me set up. Sorry about that.
We'll take a voice vote from Kelly and let's, let's vote electronically if we can.
I think Stacy, you can also.
Hear a voice vote from Terry.
Yep, aye. Just voice vote and keep us going.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion prevailed. We'll then, uh, move on to approval of the June 10th and the July 9th minutes.
I move approval of the June 10th and July 9th minutes. I second that.
Motion second. Uh, hearing no discussion, uh, we can proceed to vote.
That looked like it came up. Oh, no. Oh, there it goes.
There it is.
Aye for me?
Aye, and Terry voted aye. So we have unanimous vote. We have an unanimous vote for the, um, approval of the June 10th and July 9th minutes. We then can, uh, move on to approval and/or correction of the financial report. Uh, any presentation that you want to make. If, uh, if not, uh, Stacy, we'll just move on. Okay. Any questions? We'll have a motion, then we'll entertain questions.
I move to approve, uh, the, the, uh, expenses and the financial report for July 15, 2024.
Have, um, a, uh, motion, a second?
A second. Stacy, I vote aye.
Terry motion to, uh, financial report?
Yep.
Yep.
I think we have two. I'm, I'm, it's not coming up for, um... Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a five oh vote for the, um, finance report. We'll move on to the approval of the supplemental to the 2425 budget as that was in our materials.
It's mostly to move some money around in the special education budget. We did overspend in some areas, but we were, uh, excessive in other areas. And so we're just kind of moving around. And then for the cash reserves, we put up to a certain amount because with June, financials are not completed yet. We'll see how much comes in in taxes for June. Um, so I, I put up to that amount. We would just be spending fund balance. At this point, we do not need to move anything from general fund. So that's a good thing. We were a little short on our extraordinary costs. Um, I think originally they thought we would get, we would apply for 1.2 million. We applied, or we received just under 1.1 million. And the reason for that is you can only apply for 10, for cost for 10 children, um, in the high cost programs and we just couldn't get to where we needed. So, yeah. So that was, that was an issue. They knew this was going to happen.
Motion.
And I'm, I'm logged in now, Stacy, so I should be able to.
I'm sorry. Who was the motion? I'm sorry?
We haven't yet.
Okay.
Well, Kelly moved, I second, to approve the supplemental to the 2425 budget.
That works. And Terry, how about you?
Terry, the, approve this.
Aye, yep.
She said aye.
And you were able to vote?
Not yet. It's not up yet.
I have to. I'm not sure why it's not. That's going to be a long time. Vote on motion. Coming up for them. It did once.
Aye.
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 Was aye.
Aye, yep.
Okay, the motion prevailed. We have concluded the, uh, old business. And, um, uh, as this is my last action, I'm going to thank, uh, my colleagues here on the board for a successful year. Thank Dr. Schultz. Uh, we have a, mentioned being the new kid in the block. Well, there's more than that. We'll thank you for your good experience.
More than that.
Oh, well, yeah, you're still in the block, though. Don't forget about that. So with that, I want to thank, uh, again, thank the board members and the staff for the year we've had. And, uh, we'll continue to be successful. We've got, uh, communities, uh, really, uh, looking at the buildings that are going, that are going up and seeing the progress. The trucks are moving to move the old schools. So with that, I want to thank you again. And I'll conclude my comments.
And thank you, Wes.
Yeah, thank you, Wes, for your leadership.
And, uh, so with that, I'll, uh, uh, say that we've adjourned the meeting, uh, the 23, uh, school board, uh, 2324 school board, uh, and, uh, you know, the record will show that we adjourned at 5:30 and, uh, PM. And we'll, uh, then, uh, turn this over to, uh, Dr. Schultz, who preside while we, uh, take the oath of, uh, Deb Bates, Kelly Books, and convene, uh, the new board. So with that, um, and, you know, how do you do this? They have to sign some papers, I guess.
Okay, so I will read the oath once and then I'll call upon Deb first and then Kelly second to say, um, I do at the end, if you choose to take the oath. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota and that you will faithfully and impartially perform your duties as a member of the School Board of Birking School District, Birking County, South Dakota, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified. Deb?
I do.
And Kelly?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank God we sit by each other.
Do you present it?
I nominate Teresa Brinkley.
Second.
I move a ca, I will amend my motion to approve the motion and, uh, and have unanimous ballot cast for Teresa Brinkley.
Yes, I'll second. Yep, I'll second.
I'll be abstaining.
Aye.
I will also abstain.
Aye.
Go ahead. I, uh, thank you for this, um, opportunity. And as we go forward, then the next order of business is to elect the vice president for our board.
I nominate Deb Bates, and I, uh, move that the nominee, the nomination cease and unanimous ballot be cast for Deb Bates.
Second.
Terry second.
I will abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's coming up again now, Stacy.
Thank you, Deb. Um, thank you, Terry.
Yep.
We're going to move on now to a presentation. And... Okay.
I'm leaving. Yep.
Thank you, Terry. Bye.
So the next item on our agenda is, uh, we put, uh, Ms. Van Beek right to work. Uh, she is going to present the preliminary, or the, um, 2024-2025 budget hearing.
But, uh, general fund this year will be about 39% of our budget. Capital outlay, 13% as well as special ed is very close with 13. Um, our bond redemption for Dakota Prairie is 2%. Bond redemption at Camelot is very small, barely 0.1%. Uh, the Hillcrest to Midary bond redemption is 3%. Capital projects, we're at about 17% compared to 50% last year. That was, um, about half of our budget last year with the capital projects, but we're down to about 12 million 500 left on the new schools. So we're down to 17% left to pay out on that. Food services at 3%. Enterprise fund also very small at 0.1%. And then self insurance is close to 10%, about 9.8% is where our, uh, budget is, is going this year. And we'll start with our general fund. Our budget is very similar to last year. This year it'll be, uh, just over $29 million. Right now, uh, the use of fund balance, my best guess is about $458,000. That's very similar to last year's request. We have ended our ESAR funding. I will fill our final claims out here in August, September. We'll probably have to wait till October, November. We're waiting on a bus. Uh, that'll be my final claim. But our ESAR money is ended, and so we'll wrap that up. And that's a, the biggest part of why our budget is about the same as last year because we don't have ESAR funding. So that kind of offset our state aid increase. Uh, additional items for general funds, we got a 4% state aid increase this year. Uh, the biggest, uh, attributes to expenses would be the salary and benefit increases. Um, a few staff additions here or there. We, we cut more than we, we added, but there were some things that moved around. Uh, utility increases are always a concern. And then our, uh, liability insurance was a huge jump. As you're, you know, from previous presentations, I think, uh, last year we paid about $440,000. This year it's over $800,000 to be insured. So we'll continue to work on that. If we can avoid claims and such, I think they'll work with us to, you know, it's hard to get them to come back down once we're where we're at. But I'm just hoping we can avoid increases where, where we're at now. But, uh, we will reevaluate the budget and present it again for final adoption next month because there will be some things that change. I know we did receive some money through a 1003 grant, um, that we don't know amounts. They may have been published late this afternoon when we came over, but they'll have to add that.
Can I just ask one quick question on that liability?
Absolutely.
Do we, um, remind me, can, if we find a different provider, are we on like an annual contract?
I believe it's a one-year contract.
One-year contract, okay.
Yep, yep. So absolutely, we'll continue to look at that. Absolutely. You bet. You bet.
Yep. No, I just wondered how long we're committed to that.
Yeah, one year with the Associated School Board's protective trust.
Okay.
Yep.
If I saw that.
And then, um, these will be the levies that we ask for, uh, for the 24 payable tax, uh, 25 taxes. Uh, they're all the state maxes, which we've done in many years past. Uh, and I always think it's interesting, like, to see how much we get basically in state aid per student. And it's just over $7,400 this year. Um, I did talk with Annie Zeller today, our registrar, because I've been seeing lots of families come in to register. So I said, hey, do you have a, a projection, like, for next year? Um, I do have, uh, the chart, like, where we were at this last year. Um, 3, 4, 5, 6. It's a nice easy number to remember. But 3,455.9 students. Uh, Annie's best guess was 3,500 this fall. The budget was done based on 3,456.
Great.
So if we were to have 44 extra students come September 27th, that's the count date, September 27th, last Friday in September, um, that's about $326,000.
Wow.
So we'll see where we end up number-wise, but that could be a huge bump to not have to spend so much of cash reserves. That gets us down to, you know, just over $100,000 in deficit spending. So, uh, but yeah, we have 114 new student registrations so far.
Wow.
And it's mid, you know, we're only halfway through the summer. So there's potential. There's also potential for people to move away, but it's looking good so far.
Great.
So, yeah, that was really nice to hear. That was good news on a Monday. So, all right. Uh, moving on to capital outlay, our budget is about $9.4 million. This is where that, uh, ESAR money for the bus will come into play. Uh, there is about $1.1 million available for building improvements. So when we figure out what we need to do with science labs or anything else, we do have some money reserved for that. Um, there is a one-time $2.6 million can, transfer to the capital projects for the Midary and Hillcrest in there. Um, other items, and it's outlined in this not-so-easy-to-read chart here, but computers, curriculum, software, building maintenance warranties, maintenance equipment, um, you know, the uniform rotation for athletics and activities, all those kind of standard things in addition to our debt. And so, you know, debt is a huge part of our capital outlay budget right now. I mean, huge. But, uh, that's where that $9.4 million will go for capital outlay. And I do have, um, this was our initial numbers at the top there, the initial Hillcrest to Midary project, the bond issuance and the capital, capital outlay certificate issuance. And then the final is about, uh, 17,000, 17,600,000 higher with the additional 15 million in capital outlay certificates and then that one-time $2.6 million transfer. So that's where we're at with the projects. And I don't know, we're 90%. I mean, it's, it's coming. It's looking good, so. All right, special education. Our budget is about $9.686 million for this coming year. Um, includes increases in wages, benefits, and student placements. We do have a few more, uh, out-of-district students this year. Um, our, our day program, I talked with Heather Asmussen today. She thought that would be pretty steady this year. We do have tuition from four students from out-of-district. She did not anticipate any more at this time. That could change. But, uh, we do, at this point, have some revenue coming in from that day program. And we, since our new schools will be open this fall, we do have some room in our new elementaries to move some of the kids from the day school into the school setting. So we will not need as much space as we currently have leased. And we are, uh, working with another local business that would like to lease that space.
Great.
So I think we'll see some money come back to us that way because we won't be spending so much to lease that building. So...
That a sublet then, or?
Uh, yes, it'll be a sublease. Yep. And they're, they've kind of started working. I think the other party is very interested. So I, I think it'll go through. They're just not ready to announce yet, but...
Great.
Yep. Um, we continue to have the IEP coordinators. And then as of right now, my guess for extraordinary cost funds is, uh, $911,000. And I'll get to a, a slide here that kind of shows some more sped funding, but that's, that's kind of where I'm at now. But I, we have a few ideas on how we can try to, try to bring that down a little bit.
How many students would we apply for if we could apply for all of the extraordinary costs?
We, we would have probably needed two more.
12?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to this next slide here so you can see. And it's not the biggest font here, but up in the top, the, the FY 2025, these amounts here show how much we get for kids at each level. Okay? And we have something I skipped over, but we have, um, 667 students on our child count as of last December. So as of December 1st, or whatever their child count date was, we had 667 students we were receiving funding for. And May 17th, on the last day of school, we had 682, 682 students. So we had 15 move in and we received zero special education.
Right.
State aid for that because you don't get any for those kids who move in after. And even if they were at the lowest.
20%.
Yeah, yeah, 20% of our kids, yes. And even if they were at the lower end, you know, um, it's at least $7,500 extra to support them.
That's a legislative issue.
It is, absolutely. So, um, yeah. And, and Heather wanted me to point that out as well. Like, so this level one, kind of down here, the funding levels, they consider it a mild disability, other health impaired. And sometimes people get that confused, um, with level two cognitive disability. I mean, level two is double the money than level one, but a lot of our kids, anxiety, depression, mental health, fall in level one instead of level two. That's not considered level two. And they need extra counseling, maybe need an aide to help them get through the day because they're so anxious and whatnot. And so we just want it to be clear that we, I mean, they're not funding, it's not being funded the way, I mean, that's, that's needed to support these students in a lot of cases. So that was something we wanted to point out why we're applying for extraordinary cost funds. So, um, let's see here. And I, I mentioned this already, these numbers, the 667 and then the six, 682. Um, but yeah, just, we're working with special ed. It's better. We applied for almost, yeah, sure. Let's see. Oh, you're good. Yes, so the, the, correct. Yep. So special ed has their own count and that's in December. So the, to determine what our, our enrollment is total for the district is the last Friday in September, but for special ed, it's December. So there's more time for kids to move in and out, but that could go either way. So...
And if a child is, uh, recognized after the December 1st cutoff as needing special services, that we just add, that could be...
We provide the services. We have to for free and public education, but we don't receive any additional special education funding for those students. So for like...
So my point, though, being that it, it might not be children that moved in the district. Those extras could be children that were...
The, that number, the 15 extra, were kids that were on an IEP.
But it could, but it...
It could be, I mean, we could get 100 new kids and some of them would be on an IEP, some wouldn't. But we still wouldn't get any extra state aid for them either.
I guess my point being, some of the, some of those 15 could have been a child... I guess my point being some of the, some of those 15 could have been a child that was recognized after December 1st as needing an IEP, not necessarily moving in.
Not necessarily moving in. Yep. That's just that many more students receiving services.
Stacy, and the state sets that December 1 deadline? Because that seems odd to me when the second semester generally starts in January. So I would think that's another thing that maybe we could talk to our legislators about.
Yeah. No, I, I know. It's, it's a, it's frustrating, definitely. But we're going to do everything we can. And one thing I wanted to point out too, we have right now 16 vacancies in our special education department and that's across the board. Like we could use a speech therapist, we could use teachers, we could use behavior techs. I mean, it's, it's all across the board, positions that are open. And so if we aren't able to fill all those positions, they are budgeted for, but sub costs may look very high because we're still trying to get subs in the building to cover those positions. So that may be something we have to supplement this year, increase the sub costs, but then salaries wouldn't be as high because we don't have those filled. So just an FYI for something that may, may come up. More questions on special education? All right. Bond redemption funds, we've got three. One for Dakota Prairie. This year our budget is 1.166 million dollars and we have about 10 years left on that. And Fund 32 is Camelot. We're getting close on this one. So this will be FY 25. So we've got three years, including this current year left, and our budget there is just over $500,000. And then Fund 33 is our new buildings. And each year we're looking at about 1.139 million. That one, we're just getting started with. So it's a, it's a ways out, 2042, but. All right. And then our capital projects and food service, I think I mentioned earlier, with the capital fund, we have about $12,500,000 left that has not been billed or paid for on the project yet, but a lot of that will be coming here in the next few months. We're looking at completion next month and looking very forward to getting students in those buildings. And then food service, we are about 2.3 million this year. It does include a slight increase in meal prices that you'll look at later, staff benefits and food costs. And one thing to note about food service is that with the new preschools, we have to run a program that's called CACFP, which is Child and Adult Care Food Program. And we will have to be invoiced separately for that food. We have to track it separately because it's a whole different program than our cans program that we use for our student nutrition. So Laura and I have been talking about that already. She's on top of it. She's been doing trainings, but that's just something we have to think about for next year. And then lastly, our last two funds, our enterprise fund, this is considerably a larger budget this year because we have added the preschool into this. And so we've got driver's education, ACT prep, summer camps, summer accident insurance, and then our AP place, the testing and classes. And then the preschool, we, we talked, Dr. Schultz and I talked today, the tuition will cover our teachers. So we're in charge of paying the teachers and we'll collect the tuition. So that'll offset. So budget wise, we're good there. The collaborative will pay for the director this year. So that is included in this total, but it's probably not going to be all money that's in and out of the district. And we also talked about how if a family is on childcare assistance, then I will work with the state to learn how I need to claim that so that they can attend our program and successfully and not have to worry about that. So we're, we're in talks of, of how we do that. And then our self-insurance fund, the budget is about 7.256 million dollars. I did some calculations today. Looks like that grew about $172,000 this year. Revenues exceeded expectation, expenditures. So, you know, another way I've been thinking about, okay, how do we not apply for so much extraordinary costs and how do we get our fund used, you know, don't deficit spend? It sounds like it's maybe been a while since the district has done a district holiday for the insurance. And that's something we'll have to talk about as an insurance committee this fall. I know it sounds like last year the employees got a holiday, but once upon a time, the district portion had a holiday. And that would help general fund and special education because those costs come out of both. So something that we can think about because this fund does look to be pretty healthy. But you never know when something might happen either. So we got to be, be careful there, but something to think about because it did grow.
I was just going to mention in the food for the early learning centers, Dr. Schultz has also brought that to the collaborative. So I'm sure budgetarily, you guys will be in communication and then communication with the collaborative to figure out ways to help offset some of that too.
Yeah.
We'll have a very small number this year.
Yeah.
But.
Good, good way to start.
Good way to start, but then setting up processes of that too. So I'm sure there's some grant availability in, in that space. But just keep us in the loop on that. I know there's been a lot of talk on how to get little people food.
Yes.
The other thing, now, am I?
Yeah.
Let's just say adding a level of regulation to already regulated area has been interesting, but yes.
The other thing that I thought we might want to share since we, if we have some parents listening in our district, give a heads up. When looking at the handbooks, it looks like the meal prices are going to go up like 50 cents. It's not a huge jump, if I remember right.
I know there's a, an action item with a list, a price list that will.
Yeah. So anyway, people should pay attention so they get a heads up that there's going to be, it's only, is it only 5 cents?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a minimal increase, very minimal.
Yep. Are there any other questions about the budget? Like I said, it's still in process. We'll approve a final one next month, but that's to date my best estimations. Hey, thank you so much.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay, our next is Board Communications. So from Performance Oversight Committee.
A no report.
We don't have anything to report there. Next up would be the. Next up would be Facilities and Construction Committee.
Just quickly, I attended last Thursday's meeting, the Hillcrest, the Midary meeting. And just big picture, things are progressing. Still a lot of work to do, but you know, it's just going to happen. We're going to have, we have our students and K-3 students and new facilities come August, so.
I think you guys all got the email. We were able to have a facilities committee meeting with our two new leaders. And so that was a, a good way. And Amanda was there to take, you know, full notes for that. And so I think you all received those to work through some decision-making processes on some work with the city and some land transfer with the parks and shelters and some of those things. So we've been working hard on that. And then also of course, just some decisions on some products that were ordered for room dividing at the schools. And so we've been extensively working through and brainstorming items regarding the separation of the, the classrooms and what those products are. So yeah, hopefully you got all those notes and happy to take any questions on them.
I might add that today I toured the, not much of a tour, but I was at the transportation building, the bus, the bus building. And, and just to get, I'd, I'd never been there before. And Keith took me on for a little tour. So.
I, I would just say as someone who can look out my window and see the construction going on at Hillcrest, I am so impressed by how much effort they're putting in to have our schools ready by start of school. They're there Saturday, they were there this past Saturday when it was miserably hot and humid. And they work long hours. And again, and just a shout out to them, their effort to keep us on track to be ready.
Do, do we have any idea what date the teachers might be able to get into their schools?
So we, you can answer. We met and talked about that. And what's really, yep, what's really important right now is making sure that they have everything that they can to finish those product, projects. But since the beginning, Pierce and his team and that whole team have been laying out a timeline and will continue to communicate and Dr. Schultz will communicate to the teachers, but not now.
I mean, we, we know that if we take even temporary ownership, partial ownership, and then there's people that are, we can't have some teachers in others and then tell it's all. And so I've been pretty firm on, as a, at a district level, we will say, okay, now we're good, but we need to be good for all before we let, now, that's not to say we have some pockets of people, say our custodial facility maintenance staff, that will already be getting into Midary for sure next week and things. But as far as general teachers, we just weren't, you know, that August timeframe, maybe by the second week in August, which is still much earlier than I would have anticipated in all honesty. But we're just going to make sure it's, that it's just communicated at a district level, knowing that it, we can't have some in and not everyone.
So we'll go when everyone can go. Okay.
In most areas, unless there's big changes. For example, with our preschools completely shifting, there's some things with licensing and whatnot. And that's why just at a district level, we'll communicate at, you know, each timeframe, but not a, we don't really have that date set.
Else for facilities? All right. Policy and governance?
We have met. And if you notice on the list, there's a lot that we gave notification for, meaning that as board members, you should take a look at those. Those are the ones that we are currently under review. And as you look at it, it's a long list. There were some new laws that came forward in July from, because of state legislature. And so it's taking us a little longer to sort through all of these. There will only be one policy that we will vote on tonight. And again, the changes in that came primarily because of legislative bills that were passed that we need to follow as a district. So we'll get to that a little bit later in the agenda.
Thank you, Deb. School Finance Committee?
None at this time.
All right. Mental Health Coalition?
The Mental Health Coalition continues to meet. I've talked with Dr. Schultz about this. I think we could take that off the agenda item. And I would, what I could do is share things under the general board comments if there were some things that needed to come before the board. Of course, the efforts are always about trying to strengthen the mental health of our young people in the community and those efforts are ongoing. There will be another meeting in August for the Resiliency Group, and I plan to attend that. And I'll probably have something to report then. But I think it is something we could take off as a, just communication item. And I would just report under General Board Communication.
Sounds good. Thank you, Deb. Transportation, you saw the building today, Wes?
No, that's not much there. Just a bus garage and office area. And they are doing an environmental assessment relative to. That's the only thing that's taking place. And other than that, I think there'll be more discussion about several years.
Okay, then we're up to General Board Comments.
I have some for the Brookings Early Care Collaborative. We've met seven times since our last board meeting. And one including two different funding requests that were presented. And Dr. Schultz just did a phenomenal job with Jody Hernandez and Tim Reed for those funding requests. And so just really proud of that group and the work that has happened. So we have one request out for $400,000 that we'll hear about soon. And along with, we've already talked about the city award of funds. We also had Lori Swanson from the Governor's Office of Economic Development visit the collaborative and tour our schools last Friday. And she just said how proud she was of our community and the school district and brought that message to us and that we are a lot further along getting kids to the starting line in our community than many communities across the state. And so she's just really proud of the work that's happening in Brookings. And so that's part of the Governor's Economic Development Grant that we received. So that group has been very active.
I'd like, I'd like to acknowledge Kelly for going the extra mile, or whatever you want to call it, in reaching out and representing us on these matters regarding early childhood. It's, it's important. Some of these meetings are very time consuming and probably always at the day when you're probably the busiest. But thank you. And we need to, and appreciate all the, all the communication that you're sharing back with the board and administrative groups in this important development and timeframe as we enter this. We're, we're an unusual district, as you noted in earlier, in what we're doing. So.
It's been fun to get some of those national recognitions. The National Boys and Girls Club organization is also visiting our projects this, later this week. And so I kind of think we're going to be one of those places that people look to for leadership. And thanks for the acknowledgement, Wes.
Yeah, those things don't just happen. So Kelly and Summer, thank you again. Ditto to what Wes said, that you've worked diligently to get that dream a reality. So thank you for that.
And I would also like to add my thanks and just say, I am so excited because I think this is going to be so much fun when school starts. I, as a, you know, former educator, I just love the first day of school. So I think this is even going to be more fun now that we have the early childhood program as well.
Thank you. I'm really proud of the work of the, the committee. Summer just got going, building collaborations right when she got here and shared that that would be part of her leadership as a superintendent. And we've definitely seen that come to fruition.
Does anyone else have any general comments?
I have two general comments. I'd like to congratulate the debate team for strong showing at the Nationals and Sally Pease being recognized as the coach of the year. And then I'd also like to thank BEA for a productive study session that we had last week. And I think those, those discussions we had will lead to some good communications for our negotiations in the spring.
Well, I know, I'll add to that. I would like to recognize the FCC LA members that attended the national meeting in Seattle. And they also had a very good showing. I wish I could have been with them, but wasn't in my budget to do that. So, but congratulations to all of them too.
Anything else for Board Communications? All right. We will move on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Schultz?
In the summertime, I, a lot of our committee meetings recognize the work that, that we're doing. And in the summer, I know we don't always have administrative reports, but I did, did want to share some of the legislative and legal issues that we need to just know that will affect some of our decisions. Also knowing that we, we don't have full guidance on some of these yet. And so, you know, I met with, I met with an individual today on House Bill 1197. And although our school district needs to have, have our policies updated to follow through with that by January, it's such a quick turnaround already that we just haven't gotten that guidance. And so we're waiting a little bit on that. But again, our policy committee will review and work on those. The first thing I gave you was the Initiated Measure 28, simply school district considerations. I did not, I do not have what, how I think you should feel or an opinion on that. I simply gave you some things to think about as we move forward because I do believe a lot of people think that IAM28 is the same bill as House Bill 1075 was, which eliminated the sales tax on groceries. Initiated Measure 28 is completely different, although it's getting paired together. So I just really encourage people to make sure that they understand the difference in the two, that we are no longer working on that 2023 House Bill 1075 bill. And to get to know what IAM28 does, I've had meetings with our city administrator, I've had meetings at the state level, our executive team. And I, I know some predictions that it could have for, you know, our city. And that, that's not my information to share. But again, I think people really need to take a look at this. It will affect education. It will affect communities. And so I'm simply saying to get educated. And from that, people can form their, their own opinion. But I, I gave you a copy or a printout of all of, most of the legislative bill summary that, that affect education and school districts. And so that's just another reminder for you that our policy committee, our, our, you know, handbooks, all of the things. It's been a, it's been a quick, you know, eight weeks or so since school got out. It is hard to have all these things in place. So a lot of these are still moving forward with research. And we find out a lot of things this summer. As you know, I'm, the state superintendent conference is going on as we speak. But then the joint conference will always have sessions for bills and legislative changes that affect schools. And so I, I always kind of know that, that first week in August, we'll have a bit more guidance on some of these. I put Title IX down. I think it's. I put Title IX down, I think it's important to, that's too much to get into at a, at a board meeting by all means, but I will say that there again, the South Dakota School Districts Association and School Administrators, Rob Munson, they are, they have brought KSB into the Superintendent's Conference on Wednesday, so I am quite excited to just hear. And again, they're not telling us what training we need, because there's some questions as to whether schools should be doing training or not, based on some of the current litigation between our State Department. And, but they are going to be telling us all of those things that are right now impacting those decisions, and so that will be interesting to, to kind of hear what they're saying is out there for us to consider. And then as a school district, we might have to start deciding, because the regulations say that these go into effect August 1st, and I don't know how much all of you have stayed current, but we can't pretend it's not out there, but we also can't pretend that there isn't state litigation being, taking place from our Governor's Office and Attorney General. So it is a very muddy and complicated sector right now, and so it's great that our state is at least bringing in this law firm to be able to tell us on Wednesday, these are things your board, your school district needs to consider. So I will have more update on that after, after that.
Dr. Schultz, I think House Bill 1197, we reviewed that at our last policy meeting, that we're up to date with that in our current policy, correct? Only that we need to have it posted on our website.
You need to add one clause.
One clause. So we are, we're on top of that, I just want people to know, because that was the one that received a lot of attention during the legislative session.
Correct, correct. And again, it's probably, I, I'm not sure I have more, there's other additional legal ramifications. Pieces going in that have gone in, that was, there's still some technicalities there that we have to consider, that even I have just started getting updated on. So, you know, what you consider material is going, is that books?
Or is it more than that?
Well, if it's books, then what does that mean for our libraries and how we determine what books are brought in, and who determines what loot is, all of the things. So we are on paper, but I don't think it's going to be that easy. I, I'm not sure.
All the work we spent on that last year, I was hoping we were probably on top of it, but we'll, just so everyone knows, we are aware and we're working on that.
Absolutely, and that's where, and the individual I met with today understood completely that this bill went into, you know, effect at the end of spring. Our policy needs to be where we want it to be in January. For us to spend too much time right now and tell the Associated School Boards, the school administrators of South Dakota, put their legal teams on it, it would be almost foolish. Now, we need to know some parameters, but we need to wait for those that have the legal teams working to give us a little guidance, and that should come here soon.
Okay, great. I just wanted, I know that, I've heard a lot of comments regarding that particular bill, and so I just want people to know that we are aware and on top of that in regards to our own policies.
Yes.
Anything else, any other questions for Dr. Schultz? All right, then we're to discussion items. There's a long list of notifications. Go down them.
We could go down them. I think at this point in time, it's, you know, we're just going to tell you the title that you need to take a look at. So board members, just in looking at those, you've got your policy available to you on the website, but it's Policy CCB-R Organizational Chart, we're reviewing that and making, possibly making changes there. Review of Policy DJ.
We have to, just because it doesn't, we have personnel changes that don't, you know.
That aren't on the current organizational chart.
Exactly.
So Policy DJ Purchasing Procedures, Notification of Review of Policy DJC Bidding Requirements, Notification to you of the adoption of a new policy for DK Payment Procedures, Another Notification for DLC Expense Reimbursement.
Oh, and one, go ahead, Deb.
And another one, Policy DN for Surplus Property.
Those are all, Stacy, if you could get a look at those, and maybe we'll ask you about that at our next policy.
Amanda has given me copies of all those, so.
And we do need, yeah, we need some input from Stacy on some of those issues. The next one is Notification of the Policy EFD Meal Charge, and we did meet with Laura at our last meeting, and she gave us some input to help us with that one in particular, but this was just notification for board member, board members. The next one is Notification of the New Policy GCB Qualifications of Teachers, Notification of Policy IIIA Instructional Materials, and Notification that it's the policy I just talked about, IIAC Library Materials Selection and Adoption. And then Notification of Policy IIBFA, the Use of Artificial Intelligence Technology, and we definitely need some legal assistance with that one.
That's a totally new policy.
It is, it's a totally new policy. IIBG Use of Computers and Networks, JFC Learner Conduct, JFGA Law Enforcement and Department of Social Services Learner Interview Policy. And again, we're wanting to get some input from our administrative team to help us with that one. The next one, I think that, is that all now? Okay, so we had a little hiatus, but look at this, guys, we are, we have a lot we're working on. So we were waiting for input from the Associated School Boards, but now that we are starting to receive that, there is a backlog of things we're trying to get done. So at our next meeting will be the first notification, but, but start taking a look at these and give it, send us any comments that you might have.
Thank you, Deb. Right, we are moving on to the City School Land Transfer. Schultz?
And I apologize that this was not in the board packet last week, but I, I provided you with the memo that I sent to Paul Brizino, City Manager, I believe it was Sunday evening, to make sure that we were communicating our, after the Facility Committee meeting and, and the intention of the district. As of right now, we are asking the City of Brookings to, one of the, one of the pieces of our, of our Resolution 23-034 had to do with the land swap for the, the land at the Hillcrest School, where the, the school district needed land for the building project, and, and to set up a meeting now to make sure we continue to move forward with working with the city to decide and determine what that land should be of the districts. So that piece, and then also that we have asked them, two gazebo's need to be moved to an alternative location, based on being too close now to, to what appears to be somewhat of a service road next to the school district on the north side, and so we've asked them to move those gazebo's and then invoice us, so that they are able to use the, the folks they want and do it at, to their liking. And so that is really what the memo said and, and the direction that the Facility Committee and myself went, went forward with.
And do we give a response to this memo, or do we just say it's a mutual understanding?
This is from us. This is from us.
Okay.
This is.
And they will get back to us, or?
Their resolution was passed, so that Resolution 23-034 was passed when Dr. Schultz, over, maybe.
April 2023.
And so this is our, this is our response to that. Our board never took any formal action on their resolution, their resolution was passed as a city, so this is our response to that after our construction projects have moved forward.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions on that?
I had just said, Dr. Schultz, eventually if we can get kind of this list of, sorry, list of land, list of our full relationship with the city.
Yes.
And so I know we're working on that, and we're going to meet with them from a Facilities Committee perspective, that, the meeting that Dr. Schultz requested in this memo is already scheduled, so thanks for the urgency on that. But if we could kind of have a full breakdown of our city relationship at some point.
Yes, we started today, Keith Fodnas and I, because, trying to get him caught up, some of what I have is not necessarily updated signatures or dates, so I am going to have Amanda work with Angie and compare, and maybe the city has different records than I have. So much like that facility document that we shared with you, we will get you all of those with links prior to the Facility Committee meeting.
I, I want to point out, there's a meeting scheduled for next week. I can't, I can't not attend that.
Oh, okay.
So somebody else on the board?
Yep.
Maybe Dr. Binkley, and you can kind of coordinate who it should be. We need to have two board members.
Yes, I agree.
They will have any board members there, so.
Oh, okay.
They, they don't tend to do it that way.
Well, they, we, we got, we got an invitation.
We got an invitation from the city, so.
Or, oh, a different meeting you're talking about?
No, for this meeting, we got an invitation from the city.
Yes, we, Angie and Amanda set it up, but I don't believe they are having city council members there. They just do it differently.
Administration structure is different.
Right, so I'm just telling you, if you don't, you're, you'd be okay.
But I'm, I'm not available that day.
Got it.
If Amanda could get me the time and place, I could probably be there. Well, when is it?
You could forward it to her.
Yep, I can forward it.
Okay.
Yeah, we, it just came in.
If it's moved to the following week, I could make it, about any day.
Keep it next week, because some discussions surrounding Fifth Street Gym and, and the district's intent to move forward is on there also.
Okay, next item is the Consent Agenda.
I move the Consent Agenda items as prepared.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Second, ready for the vote?
Aye.
Off? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have approval of donated items. Need a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the donated items.
I second that.
By Kelly, seconded by Deb. Very, very nice donations that came in this month, for the Brookings High School Football Team from Bruce Johnson, for the Speech and Debate from Dakota Debate Institute, for the Brookings High School Cross Country Club from the Prairie Striders, and for Child Wellness Fund from Chandra Gain. So thank you to those people who have donated those items, and we should be ready for a vote.
Books?
Aye.
Debates? Binkley?
Aye.
Cheddar?
Aye.
Okay, we have to approve to enter into the Associated School Board's Property Insurance Fund. Need a motion in a second, please?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion in by Wes, seconded by Kelly, any discussion? Ready for the vote?
Books?
Aye.
Debates?
Aye.
Binkley?
Aye.
Cheddar?
Aye.
Approval to amend the Early Retirement Document with First Bank and Trust. Is there a motion for this, please?
I move approval.
I second it.
Moved by Wes, seconded by Deb. I think this involves the change we made during negotiations for our early retirement benefits, and it's just showing that in this document, so any other discussion? Ready for the vote, Stacy?
Books?
Aye.
Debates?
Aye.
Binkley?
Aye.
Cheddar?
Aye.
Approval to amend the early, oh, I'm sorry, we did that. Approval of the revisions made to Policy GCDB on Background Checks.
This is a pretty extensive policy, hopefully you've had a chance to look at it, but the changes that are there were recommendations. Oh, I'm sorry. I move approval of this.
And I will second that, and now go ahead, Deb.
Sorry. It's a pretty lengthy policy, there were not many changes made, but those that were made came from recommendations from the Associated School Board. So if you look through that, if you have any questions at this point in time, but it's a very extensive following state law about background checks for those individuals that are working with young people in our school district, which is a very important consideration.
And I, I believe a, a main part of it was the FBI report was not to be released, but now laws came that said we have to release that if the, if the individual asks, requests for it, so. Any other questions or discussion? Right, we're ready for that vote.
Books?
Aye.
Debates?
Aye.
Binkley?
Aye.
Cheddar?
Aye.
All right, we need approval of the temporary easements for the 12th Street South Shared Used Trail Crosswalk Project.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Kelly, seconded by Wes. Do you want to fill us in on anything? There's Dr. Schultz, it's pretty, the documents attached were very easy to understand, so. Ready for the vote?
Books?
Aye.
Debates?
Aye.
Binkley?
Aye.
Cheddar?
Aye.
Okay, now we have several handbooks to approve.
I would say if we, this probably shouldn't be the place to work on grammatical or formatting type questions, however, if there were, were content issues, if you have grammatical formatting that you want to get back to the building represent, building or activity representative, we will get those to Amanda, and she will share them out, but I don't know that, that would be the best use of time tonight, so.
I totally agree with that. I would just mention that where we have links to make sure those links are working before they get posted on the websites for. Okay.
Yeah, and the one other question that I might say is, there's not specific handbook for Brookings Bobcat Academy, but I'm assuming that the high school, is there?
We are working on it, however, we knew it would be.
Well, that's coming.
It, it is, it is crafted, it is being working on, but as you can imagine, we have to, it is evolving, and so to put it out in front of people tonight would just not have been the appropriate place. So you will see it, and we have practices and procedures that now that we, you know, Michelle is now in charge of that program, but it's a big shift. Having one administrator and working with the Boys and Girls Club a bit more, some different things, and so it, it is, we are not using many things that are different, it's just that as we are enrolling students, as we have one administrator, it's just, it needs to evolve over the next month, and so I told her, I did not want it on for her tonight, because it, it would not be the time for you to see it the first time.
That was just my question, because I didn't see it, and it wasn't mentioned in the high school one, so thanks for clarifying that, Dr. Schultz.
So we, could we make the motion to be approval of the handbooks in 12.6 through 12.13, with any formatting or grammatical editing given to Amanda that she can pass on to the prospective people in charge of those handbooks? Could we have a motion for that, please?
I move approval of the content of the handbooks for our coming, upcoming year, with the idea that grammatical editorial changes will be submitted to Amanda for updating prior to the printing of those documents or the posting of those documents.
I will second that. Any discussion?
I guess the only thing I had to bring up is a larger discussion, long term, about cell phone policy in our middle school and high school. So I've spoken to Dr. Schultz and sent a couple websites and a couple different things about, and you've seen school boards across the country starting some cell phone bans in high school, and so I guess I just would like us to add that to an agenda sometime or a strategic planning session, or look for some sort of cell phone policy usage disruption kind of plan.
And regarding that, I know, Dr. Schultz, you shared about the pockets, whatever they're called. I'd like more information on that, too, like what, what would the cost to our district be? I did talk to my friend that taught in the Platt School District, that they've used them, and they really, it's working well. So I think there, it's opportunities for us to find out more about that potential for that in our district, too, so that ties in with what Kelly was saying about our cell phones, because, yeah, there's a lot of things happening nationwide regarding that.
Yeah, there really is, and, and it's one that our administrators in those buildings need to lead that charge, not. need to lead that charge, not, not necessarily me, but I also agree with you that we have to, we have to start digging in and look and make sure that we can, what we stand for is what we are allowing, what we allow, we support. And so just making sure everyone is on that page, and I'll let Justin, Mr. Stanley, the new, you know, principal, know that is one of the areas we want to, you know, we want to have a focus on for possibly performance and oversight committee, or, because it would be, it would be a big undertaking, but just getting to understand where we're at. I don't even know, you know, sometimes in districts, it's, it depends on the teacher, or do we have one district-wide or school-wide? So I have a lot of educating myself to do for it, too. So I will ask him to start.
I just think maybe putting that out now so people maybe know that that might be something that our tech people should be thinking about, our administrators should be thinking about as teachers as we move forward and kind of examining. And I agree, principals should be, you know, leading that charge, but, you know, it might be something where we lead the charge first because we're at a point.
Right, I mean, we have them with us from the start to educate us to begin with.
Help us.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, so, so anyway.
Yes, and I will say, I know in Platte, they have changed to a second type. They implemented long ago enough that they have found what worked and what didn't, and they even found a, a new type they've.
Anyway, my friend who teaches, taught there says it worked very well, and they really appreciated that. So the cost of it, I would just like to know because I know that could be, hopefully not prohibitive, but something that we would need to consider.
No, I can send you the information I have, and I will say the Underpouches, which is just one, one supplier of it, they were the corporate sponsor, the main corporate sponsor of our school administrator, our superintendent national conference this year. And so, and then obviously with our connection to, to Platte and, and how they got to where they are, we have a lot of additional information that I already have I can share.
Thanks.
So the, so the record will show the motion, that the motion reads approval of 12.6, which is the search handbook, all the way down to 12.13, inclusive learner activities advisory handbook. That's right.
Would it, sorry, would it be fair to say that we want a clear, do, do we want, I, I'm not sure if what's in the current handbook for cell phone use is what you want? Do you want a clearer understand or even for our expectations this year, or consider it as a priority of?
I mean, I guess what I would, I would say giving, I, I don't know the middle schools' feelings or how they're going. I've just mainly heard more about the high school, I guess, from public perception and other things, and I don't know exactly what's happening or true or any of those things. So if Dr. or Justin wants to take a year and work through that and think of, you know, his, his leadership and allow him and Zach to think through that and his teachers, that's fine with me. I just, it's on my radar for sure.
I'm always sending them things, so they know it, they know it's on.
It might be good for the, Justin and Todd to talk about the policies between the middle school and high school. There was a little bit of difference between those two.
I do notice that we've been kind of asking for years if these handbooks, and Teresa's been great about saying align with our policies, connect to our policies, and then are also more comprehensively understood from early childhood all the way up. Because it's very confusing as a parent and a child when you transition numerous times through our district to have such a variety of, of handbooks and language, so.
One thing I, in talking with one of you on this is, it seems like that June, June timeframe, it's a mad dash to get policies done. And I would like to, I don't know if it's, again, policy and oversight or what committee, but getting, again, the templates, the expectations, what we expect to see in them, so that come next year, it isn't that we're asking, but having, having that performance in oversight committee, or maybe a different group, start looking at the different templates that we could have, should have, and, and begin that organization process so that we have a full year, so that it's, it doesn't creep up on us next year.
And it is really important when you look at situations that we get into when you have policy and handbook language that are different from each other, so.
I will say this, that it was great to have all three elementary schools together in one handbook, as opposed to in the past, we've had to go to Prairie, Madera, Hillcrest, that was a good move. And I also like the fact that there, there is a little bit more consistency in format across the different handbooks, which we didn't have necessarily in the past. But it's a, you know, we get it, we don't have much time to go through all of them prior to a board meeting, and so I like that idea of having a committee because we would, we could really catch some things maybe a little bit more. I mean, I quite, I don't, I want to say I know the administrators did a lot of work on that, and I compliment on that, but it's, but it's easy to forget or miss things when you've got a 20-some page handbook that you're trying to update.
Right, and I think sometimes we just do what was always there. I know I'm already, I am very, I'm already a year in, and there's things I'm doing only because it's always been done that way, and so handbooks often are one of those things, and it maybe doesn't need to be 20 pages, maybe it needs to be condensed with what we believe are clear priorities for handbooks, and we, and we start working on that piece, too.
I did like the middle school approach that Todd and Matt took to kind of, on a, on an item, they kind of took the first few sentences of our policy and then just listed the policy. So it really shortened up the handbook, and I think it makes it not so overwhelming that people might read it a little more. So I did think that was a good strategy, and I agree, Kelly, we should have, take a year to, to look at the cell phone use and with new administrators and see, it's, it's easier to do it once the right way than have to do it over because you rushed through it, so. Okay, with that, I think we'll just take a voice vote, Stacy, because these are all separate on the agenda, so.
And we're going to combine them all into one.
And we're going to combine them into one.
All right, books.
Aye.
Debates.
That was confusing. Handbooks, books, aye.
Debate, debate.
Debates, yeah.
Aye. All right. And Binkley?
Aye.
And Cheddar? It moved out of, when you moved him, Teresa, it wouldn't let me do the, I didn't have the vote done, and you advanced, so I gotta go.
Oh, you want me to?
Like stop there, and I'll just put it in here.
In this one, I'm sorry.
Um, I lost my, my motion in my second.
I can go back.
Can you go back? It may still be gone.
If you click, Teresa, on the, this part right here. Go right to it. That little dropdown.
Yeah, the dropdown.
There? Do you have it?
All right, yep, it's back up. Okay, and then, do you remember who made the motion in the second? It cleared out.
And I seconded.
Okay. Everyone was an aye. I need to mark Terry as.
I think you can vote, Deb.
All right, Binkley?
Is it on there now?
It's up now. You're kidding.
I'm not.
Hey, so we heard, did you do something way different?
Same as I've done the last 27.
So then we'll move to item 12.14, the approval of Chris Long nomination for West River At-Large Representative for the South Dakota High School Activities Association.
I move approval of Chris Long.
Any discussion? Okay, I'm trying to get our slides to the next vote. Okay, we should be ready for that vote, Stacy?
Okay, so I had Deb's motion, and who was the second?
Wes.
It on your screen? Of course not. Okay, so. All right, books.
Aye.
Debates.
Aye.
Binkley.
Aye.
Cheddar.
Aye.
12.15, approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Brookings School District and Luther College for Student Teachers.
I move approval.
I second that.
Any discussion? Must have some student teachers coming out of there to be in our school district. All right, we're ready for the vote, Stacy?
All right, books.
Aye.
Debates.
Aye.
Binkley.
Aye.
Cheddar.
Aye.
12.16, approval of Oldham, Ramona, Rutland School District to pick up drop-off students at the Casey's General Store on Sixth Street.
I move approval.
I will second that. Any discussion?
Well, state law pretty much dictates that we have to do this.
If you remember my first meeting last year, I was a little confused on this because in the metro area, we didn't do this much, but we have to agree to the location. It's not whether or not they can, it's to the location, and this location has been one they have used, so it makes sense to approve.
All right, we're ready for the vote.
Books.
Aye.
Debates.
Aye.
Binkley.
Aye.
Cheddar.
Aye.
12.17, approval of the administrative rule waiver application for Sarah Barefoot.
I move approval as presented.
Second.
Anything to add for that one, Dr. Schultz? All right, no more discussion, we're ready for that vote.
Books.
Aye.
Debates.
Aye.
Binkley.
Aye.
Cheddar.
Aye.
Okay, I would need a motion then and a second to move into executive session.
That's your motion, I'll second it.
I will move that we move into executive session.
Pursuant.
Pursuant to SDCL. SCL 1-25-2 subsection 1. You have a motion in a second? We need a vote, please.
Books.
Aye.
Debates.
Aye.
Binkley.
Aye.
Cheddar.
Aye.
No.